I'm not sure I can look at that though. Okay, we'll get started and call the meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the August fifteenth Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. First item on our agenda today is discussion item for Hull Residence, a chapter two nineteen application. Hello?
Hello, I'm Ian.
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Jean Overton, BKR Shores, here to represent us, Hull.
Okay. John?
Okay, so the planning department has received and reviewed a chapter two nineteen coastal erosion hazard line permit application for the replacement of a forty foot linear feet of existing bulkhead, backfill and bulkhead with up to a hundred and fifty cubic yards of clean fill from an upland source and construct two twenty foot new bulkhead returns. The area shall be restored with stalked jute fabric and Cape American Beechgrass plugs at twelve inches. The project will help control erosion at the toe of the bluff. For the project engineer, as per the applicant's design professional, the bulkhead is designed and will be constructed in accordance with generally accepted engineering principles and shall be constructed using treated timber whales and timber piles and treated tongue and groove sheeting and will successfully control erosion for thirty years. The site is developed on a quarter of an acre parcel with a residential dwelling wooden deck within the RV eighty zoning use, district on the north side of Cliff Road, east and Wayne River. In a letter dated July fifteenth, twenty nineteen, the town's consulting engineer took no objection to the proposed design and improvement. The chapter two nineteen is an enlisted action pursuant to SECRA, coordinate review is optional and is not recommended. And staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency status under SECRA, declare a negative declaration. Staff also recommends the planning department to make frequent inspections to ensure erosion control methods are being applied and bluff erosion is limited during period of construction of the armor of the stone wall. Staff further recommends that an agreement between the town, the applicant and the contractor for a hold harmless agreement so the beach can be used to access the project site.
John, I can see by the picture here, but I'm just curious, there's no issue with the public use of the beach or anything like that, right?
No. John, here's the quick question. In your last statement you said something about frequent inspections.
They also specified on the plans during after every storm event, either I or the applicant is obligated to inspect the bulkhead or the marine contractor that put it in to assess the condition.
Until it's complete?
Just in general, after every storm.
Where's the clean fill coming from?
Upland source.
What does that mean?
They, he trucks it in from the state in East Quab, most likely he'll get it from, there's a mine, there's a sand mine there. There's also one in there, I don't know. Depends on who gives the best prices for clean fill.
Can they provide paperwork? That would assure us that it's clean and it's not coming from some constructed site.
Oh, sure.
You know, it's required now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be the typical, you know, bank run, but it's established as clean.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Unless the contractor.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We have the resolution for later. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Stewart asked.
Thank you. Okay, next item, U Residence, chapter two nineteen. Did I come in or?
No.
Okay.
Alright, so the planning department has received, received and reviewed a chapter two nineteen coastal erosion hazard line permit application to construct an armor stone wall consisting two to three ton armor stone and rip raft two rows wide to protect and stabilize the existing bluff to prevent further erosion. The wall is proposed to be eight feet in height, a hundred and thirty-three feet long and tied into an existing Navy style bulkhead to the west and with a ten foot return on the east side. The maximum extent of the backfill and landis stern shall be ten feet lammert of the proposed stone wall with installation of a hundred yards of clean sand. All disturbed areas will be planted with American Beechgrass. The slope lammert of the stone wall shall be stabilized by grading, terracing, fillings and plantings with appropriate native vegetation. For the, regarding the project engineer, as per the applicant's design professional, the armor stone wall is designed and will be constructed in accordance with generally accepted engineering principles and shall be demonstrably successful in controlling erosion for thirty years. The material is specified as durable and capable of withstanding inundation, waving packs and weathering for a period of thirty years. All lumber for the proposed stairways shall be treated with a minimum of one point five CCA pounds per cubic foot or better that resist decay for thirty years. The stairs will be installed a minimum of four feet above the existing grade and not disturb any existing vegetation. The subject location and characteristics, the site was developed in a residential dwelling, with a residential dwelling patio in ground swimming pool within the RE zoning use district on the north side of Founder's Path. In a letter dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen, the town's consulting engineer took no objection to the proposed design and improvement. The chapter two nineteen is an enlisted action pursuant to SECRA, coordinate review is optional and is not recommended and staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency status and issue a negative declaration. Staff recommendation, the staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency status, declare the action as enlisted and further recommend to issue negative declaration with the following conditions. One, prior to the commencement of construction, the applicant shall schedule an appointment with the Town of Riverhead's environmental planner to conduct a site inspection and verify the installation of erosion control measures. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the contractor shall secure a staging area and identification agreement for use of Town Beach Access Point located at Edwards Avenue. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall demonstrate how the contractor will cross the beach seaward of the mean high water mark. Four, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the contractor shall request written permission from the Town of Riverhead Highway Superintendent for the use of Edwards Avenue as a staging area and access to the project site located at sixty-two Founder's Path. Five, the contractor shall remediate and repair any damage to Edwards Avenue caused by the staging of construction equipment and storage of construction material. And six, the application shall not commence any construction activity until the summer season, summer beach season has ended.
I suggest on this one too, that we make a note of the having some kind of paperwork that states.
Certified clean fill.
Yep, and I, I would also say because of the difference in the size of this project compared to the other one, there's not, they're only saying they're putting in a hundred and fifty yards, I think I remember, it seems like that might be a little light. Is there any way we can make sure that they're not bringing in twenty-five hundred, you know, I mean?
Yeah.
I think we ought to check that the way, I know it's more.
So you answered my one question, they're not going to do any staging at the end of Edwards Avenue until after summer?
Yes, until the season's over.
You know how far after summer, because I mean people still use the beach a couple of weeks after Labor Day?
I'm not sure, I can look into that for you though.
Okay, and you said they're going to tie it into an existing wall on the west side?
Yes.
What are they doing on the east side?
They are putting, uh, return walls.
Oh, return walls, okay. Alright. And they, there's nothing, I'm trying to remember that Edwards, the end of Edwards, you can't, you could go east but you can't go west there?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, can be, there's a, there's a.
Beach wars in that area.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Alright, thank you. Okay, next item, item three, Verizon Wireless at Fresh Pond Avenue.
I thought we had approved this one before.
I think it's been, second time around.
Yeah, this is a new one.
Oh, it's a new one?
Yeah.
New one again. Seems every two weeks. New equipment, oh, it's new equipment, right?
I will say one thing, they certainly did provide paperwork with this, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application to modify and upgrade an existing public utility wireless communications facility. The proposed action is an enlisted action pursuant, pursuant to SECRA, coordinate review is optional and is not recommended. The proposed modifications will be made to an existing public utility wireless communications facility located upon and proximate to an existing plus or minus a hundred and twenty foot above grade level monopole located on the east side of Fresh Pond Avenue on a one point, a point nine four acre parcel within the agricultural protection zoning district. His drowning areas include vacant land, agriculture, residential uses. The proposed work is to replace nine of the twelve new mounted panel antennas, replace three of six existing RRH units, add three additional RRH units and add three twin duplexers. The RF analysis, the RF analysis, no, sorry, the report states that the RF exposure levels at the site will be two point four seventy-four percent of the maximum permissible exposure limits established by the FCC. The structural analysis report prepared and stamped by Patrick J. Davis, licensed New York State PE, analyzed the existing antenna supporting structures and found that the tower has sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration with no modifications required at this time. The mount analysis also analyzed the mounting brackets on the tower which, to which proposed loads will be applied and determined the existing mount has sufficient capacity to support the existing and proposed loading under TIA twenty-two H standard and had no modifications as recommendations at this time. Uh, planning staff recommends that the board assume lead agency issue a negative declaration and grant administrative approval to modify and upgrade existing public telecommunications facility with the following recommendations, that prior to issuance of a building permit, a letter written, signed and stamped by a New York State License PE certifying that the site plan issued date corresponds with the structural analysis, mountain analysis and site plan packet. And prior to the issuance of a cer- certificate of occupancy, a post-construction analysis prepared by a licensed New York State PE certifying that all work conforms to the approved plans designed and any structural requirements. The board have any questions?
The FCC compliance report, does anybody else operate on the tank besides Verizon? So did the compliance report take into account?
Yeah, it takes into all the carriers.
Okay. All the carriers were taken into account in that report. Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Now it's AT&T and T-Mobile on there.
So there's three?
Yep.
And it took into account all?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is Verizon at Edwards Avenue.
Alright, the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application to modify and upgrade an existing wireless communications facility with regard to SECRA, it's an enlisted action where coordinate review is optional and is not recommended. The proposed modifications will be made to an existing wireless communications facility located upon and proximate to a one hundred and sixteen foot above grade level monopole located on a fifty-two acre parcel at four twenty-two Edwards Avenue in Calverton within the industrial A, industrial zoning district. This surrounding area includes industrial, solar farms, agricultural and residential uses. The proposed work is to replace six of the nine panel antennas, replace six of the nine RRH units, remove three existing RRH units which are not to be replaced, remove and replace two existing tower mounted main distribution boxes and remove and replace one GPS unit and associated ancillary equipment. The RF, the RF analy- analy- the RF analysis analyzed all existing and proposed Verizon wireless communications equipment and all other carriers including AT&T and T-Mobile. The report states that their RF exposure levels at the site will be three point three five seven six percent, well below the FCC maximum permissible exposure limits. The structural analysis prepared and stamped by Patrick J. Davis, licensed New York State PE, analyzed the existing antenna supporting structures and found that the tower has sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration and no modifications are required at this time. The mount analysis report prepared and stamped by Stephen A. Bray, licensed New York State PE, analyzed the existing Verizon mounting system to which the proposed loads will be applied and determined the existing mount to have sufficient capacity to carry the proposed loading configuration with no modifications required at this time. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency issue a negative declaration and grant administrative approval with the following conditions, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a letter written, signed and stamped by a New York State License PE certifying the site plan issued date corresponds with the structural analysis, mount analysis, the site plan packet. And prior to the issuance of this certificate of occupancy, a post-construction analysis prepared by licensed New York State PE certifying that all work conforms to the approved plans designed and any old structural requirements.
Are these considered five G upgrades?
I'm not sure, but I can look into that.
Yeah, I'd just like to know if that's why they're changing these so quickly, because they're coming back around again for these locations so quickly.
It's equipment, better equipment I got.
And also, you know what I think might be helpful for the file going forward on some of these actual pictures of the site?
Yeah.
Um, you know, what they have on the ground and what the, whether it's a monopole or, you know, a flagpole or whatever it might be. Just to have, you know, updated pictures on file to reference to as they keep coming back.
Okay.
Okay.
These, these two both have external antennas. That's one thing the planning board was pushing, maybe you can mention it to the town board, we should codify that, uh, any new towers be monopoles with no, uh, external antennas.
Okay, thanks, John.
No problem. Busy guy.
Yep.
Okay, next item, uh, number five on the agenda, Roggero's at Waiting River, the shops at East Wind, Waiting River. She just stepped out? I don't know if they need to be in a.
I mean, I can go over her, Fedun.
Does he need to be here or no?
No, I, I spoke with him, he had a.
Alright, so we'll go to, uh, number six, we'll come back to five, Fedun Warehouse on Pulaski Street.
Alright, so this is just a quick update, um, on the, to the board, uh, before we go forward with a preliminary approval. Uh, this is for the construction of a five thousand square foot warehouse on the corner of Pulaski Street and JT Boulevard. Um, really just coming to inform the board on the results of the soil samplings that they had requested. Um, Mr. Fedun did get samples tested, uh, for the presence of, um, asbestos and for oils. Um, we have results from two companies which is attached to the fact that there were no contaminants found in the site. Before we move forward with a preliminary approval, uh, we're just going to recommend a condition that any further disturbance, I mean, you know, as he stands right now, he's not posing any disturbance to the pile. If at any point in the future the site goes to get developed further, if there is any disturbance, we just recommend additional review and approvals from the planning board. Um, I am waiting for highway comments, I spoke with the assistant superintendent for the highways. They're going to get me comments prior to the approvals, um, whether or not they're going to require curving and sidewalks, that sort of stuff. But unless the board has any further questions with regards to the testing, that's pretty much where we're at, just a quick recap and, uh, we'll probably have a preliminary approval at the next meeting.
That's what we wanted.
So he had, uh, I know he had tested it himself. So we had it retested?
Well, so, yeah, he, he had, he had taken samples from the site, he, uh, submitted a sworn affidavit that he took samples from the pile. You know, there was no chain of custody per se, but he does have a sworn affidavit here. You know, that was acceptable to counsel of the planning board, I spoke with him, uh, and that's what we came up with the condition of just, you know, any further disturbance of that pile will require further testing.
That's fine, that's what we asked for, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Karen.
Okay, back to five, Roggero's, uh, Waiting River, the shops at East Wind.
Hi, so if anyone needs.
Yeah, I, I said I had very little comments that I had as a report. Matt, should I look over engineers?
Hello. Good to have you, Governor Matt.
Yes.
Nice to meet you, or nice to see you guys. Um, okay, if anyone needs another copy or script, let me know, because I have extras here. So, um, the applicant proposes to add a seasonal patter- patio covering according to the application, additional parking lot, conversion of a house on a separate adjacent parcel to accessory storage for the uses on the shopping center parcel. But just so you know, the parking area includes improvements on both parcels, but the, all the parking stalls will be on the smaller parcel. Um, the patio covering is actually attached to the existing restaurant. The enclosure is supposed to be, supposed to be used seasonally and will hold eighty-eight restaurant seats in addition to a hundred and twenty-eight seats in Roggero's. The enclosure includes motorized vertical sash windows, motorized screens and a motorized roof tent system with LED lighting. It's on the west side of the restaurant and will be vis- visible near the corner of twenty-five A and Sound Avenue. Uh, a leaching pool is to be provided for roof drainage. In addition, on that parcel, a small portion of the parking area is proposed to be restripped to provide two additional handicap parking stalls. On the adjacent parcel, which is twenty thousand three hundred and thirty-two square feet, they are going to convert the existing eight hundred and seventy-six square foot house to accessory storage for the existing shopping center. And as I said, it will include the majority of the new parking area, proposed drainage structures, pole lighting for the parking and landscaping. The existing unpaved house driveway is shown to remain. So just to give you a little background, the, um, Nightland Village Shopping Center, which is also called Shops at East Wind, was approved in, um, twenty eleven. The restaurant, uh, the large restaurant Roggero's, um, was to, um, well, let me, sorry. Um, it approved, uh, an alteration of existing building for restaurant use, which is now Roggero's, and construction of twenty-four retail buildings totaling thirty-two thousand five hundred and, five hundred and eighteen square feet. There was an amendment, uh, subsequently in twenty fifteen, and that was basically because they found that they couldn't renovate or the existing building, so they reconstructed it with, um, adding, it was in the same footprint, but they added seven feet and some roofing over an exterior stair. The sanitary calculations on the signed miler show the restaurant was approved for sixty-six indoor seats and thirty-two outdoor seats. So apparently, as time went by, they got some different tenants. It was not just the one restaurant and retail. Now they have, um, both dry and wet retail, uh, thirty-one seat pizzeria in addition to Roggero's, yoga and dance studios, um, real estate professional offices, et cetera. The parcels are under affiliated ownership, um, Nightland Inc. and Kenny Barra respectively. So, I'm sure everyone knows where this is located, at the corner of twenty-five A and Sound Avenue for the shopping center. The, um, property with the single family house, front Sound Avenue and is east and north of the shopping center and west of East Wind Inn and Caterers. It's across from the, um, Ramblewood Mobile Home Park across Sound Avenue. So, the location is within the water district and the existing buildings are on, are on sanitary systems. And I provided some pictures. I do want to apologize, uh, I switched out a picture at one point and I didn't change the text, so, um, I refer to, you can't see the house for the trees, but obviously you can. It's a type two action because it's under four thousand square feet. So, I, I included a lot of information on the sanitary, um, but just to simplify, as I said, when we approved the site plan, it was approved for sanitary with sixty-six indoor seats and thirty-two outdoor seats on the patio for the restaurant. Basically, at some point, they went back to the health department and got approval for, um, a hundred and fifty-six seats with thirty-two on the patio, and this was through the use of Pine Barrens credits. So, basically, we have a, a green stamp plan for the use of the Pine Barrens credits for a hundred and fifty-six indoor seats and thirty-two outdoor seats on a patio. I, also, we got a, um, originally we had gotten an approval to construct for the residents, and recently did, just got a green stamp for that. So apparently they had put in a, um, new sanitary system for the residents, but based on a, a residential use. So I did speak to, um, VG, Mr. George from the health department, and he indicated that, um, they would need to go back to the health department for the warehouse use for the house. Although the sanitary should be fine, it's just a matter of going, getting the paperwork done. And also, they would need to get approval for the, the enclosure, because this plan, which was approved, shows a patio. And they indicated if you're adding, in addition, you're adding square footage to the restaurant, you need approval from the health department. So I did correspond back and forth with Matt, and I think we're on the same page with that.
Yep.
Who's the residents, I think you're talking, where's that going to be?
The, the residents we talked about will no longer exist. It was an eyesore of a building.
Right there?
That was in really bad shape. Unfortunately, the man couldn't take care of it. We considered redoing it, we cleaned out the sanitary, got permission from the town to clean it up, make it look nicer. And we started thinking about, why did we need this? We needed it because people are getting blistered out in the patio in hot weather. They, they couldn't handle sitting out in the. They they couldn't handle sitting out in the brick, and if it rained, we got blistered, get maybe we got rained on. So we thought of this and we said, let's get rid of the house, let's just use it for storage. We had a meeting with with planning staff back in October, and we said, this is a smart idea, get rid of the house, put some extra parking, we want the parking, let's put it there. Let's go ahead of times, Red Raw Pine Barrens credits, get a running start over there. And then Brad Hammond gave us a letter and we addressed that, and we said, let's break up the seats, we'll have more outside eighty-eight under this facility. And and the idea of this was to, it it's like a tent, but better, but not quite like a greenhouse. So the sides go up and down and and the roof can open up, so winter time, we the snowiness go through, keep it open, we'll use it. Be seasonal in the sense that when you need air conditioning, we'll have everything buttoned up, when we don't, we can open the windows, and it'll be really nice out on the patio for eighty-eight seats. So, the whole thing works and the health department will get, they'll have to wait for the secret determination from the town, but we'll have it submitted and buttoned up pretty quickly, so.
I just wanted to clarify something, if you don't mind me stepping in. They had approval for a hundred and fifty-six indoor seats and thirty-two outdoor seats on the patio. What they're proposing to do is kind of rejigger the indoor and the outdoor seating, so it doesn't have any effect on the sanitary calculation. So, they're going to go to eighty-eight. Outdoor seats in the enclosure and a hundred and twenty-eight seats indoors. So, what they're proposing to do is to decrease the indoor seating and increase the outdoor seating.
The outdoor seating is still seasonal, is it not?
Yeah, oh yeah, sure.
Right, so the outdoor seating is 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 calculated at five gallons per day and the indoor seating is at ten gallons per day.
The indoor is actually in alignment with what's actually there.
Uh, we're we're fine with the health department, we're very comfortable with it, we we're so comfortable, we surrender our Pine Barrens credits, God forbid we don't get approved, but we will, we're pretty sure.
Back to the question, I I see where the little park is going, there's residence there, okay, where is the residence that you were talking about that the health department approved?
That same.
That's the residence.
When we bought the residence a couple of years ago, we said, this is a bomb, so.
That's gonna be a warehouse, that's gonna be a warehouse, yeah.
Storage and parking.
Storage and parking.
Right, so it's now part of the whole campus and rather than have a house.
Yeah, let me pull out the plan so everybody.
I got it.
Oh, we got it, we got it.
I got it here.
But initially, we we went for the health department's permit for the.
Oh, the residence is here.
Yes.
This is the park.
That's right.
So, basically, we require that they get their Suffolk County Health Department approval for the enclosed enclosure ar area from the health department prior to getting the building permit and then getting the the green stamp before they get the C O. And then that they keep the seating at the allowed amount. As far as parking goes, we do have parking calculations for the updated uses, which would be a hundred and nineteen stalls with eleven handicap stalls. They're proposing a total of two hundred and twenty parking stalls, which is one more than required with eleven handicap stalls. They included the house in the calculation, they're proposing a thirty-stall parking addition. And I just wanted to note that the parking for retail use has changed from one per two fifty to one per two hundred. Although the square footage of the areas in the parking calculation table is. The total square footage in the parking calculation table is incorrect, although the individual ones are seem okay, so that would have to be corrected. And then just as far as the plans, we would require that the two parcel parcels be merged since they're part of one development plan. The water district is requiring an R P Z device for the building to be changed to the warehouse use, so that should be shown. The elevations indicate the colors for the rolling tent roof and the aluminum structure. Will be selected by the owner, since then, we've been told it would be white. And I've been kind of relaying information to the A R B, hoping to expedite the A R B re review. And it seems like most of the, not to get ahead of myself, but it seems like most of the A R B members are okay with the the screening, the existing evergreens along Sound Avenue and twenty-five A. But I haven't heard from all of them, although I requested it. So, based on that, I've scheduled the project for the August twenty-first A R B meeting, just to.
I'll be there.
Get that squared away.
Just had a question. It looks like this is gonna be permanent.
Yes.
Right, they lower down so that essentially, once they're lowered, it's like a guardrail around it, so, you know.
So technically, they could put heat in here, and you can use them all year round.
Yeah, and air conditioning, but but they couldn't take, we were about the roof gaping with the heavy snowstorm, so we're not gonna, we're gonna, you know, and no one's gonna be there. We wanna obviously cover the, you know, it's a little bit cooler, a little bit warmer, we're gonna have air conditioning or heat, whatever it is, gonna meet the fire code, so.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be seasonal.
Well, except the fact that you you would say to me, are we gonna be there in the winter time, and there's a bunch of snow there, we're not.
No, you'll probably stretch it to early November, maybe.
Whatever the people are out, whatever the business is there, that's, you know, that's the deal. Sort of a nice idea, rather than keep a tent up, and it's a little bit classier and more, you know, more solid. And I wanna go into A R B, I didn't realize it even, but I'll be there next week.
There was a a traffic barrier put up that was not shown on the original plan, and unfortunately, I had a problem with transferring photos from my phone, so. It looks like a regular wooden traffic barrier you would see on a highway.
That was actually, one of my only questions is, is that is quite a bend there on twenty-five A and Sound Avenue. And I was just a little concerned about somebody not negotiating that at night and going straight through, 'cause if they continue straight coming from the west, they're going right in there.
We have a sign, a flagpole, and now he's put a barrier.
The barrier.
And he's talking about the barrier.
Okay.
So, my only comment was that they they in this area, that they show the barrier, 'cause it's not.
Yeah, but we'll do that.
I did want the title page to be revised because it only talks about the the addition to the restaurant, it doesn't talk about the change in use of the residence and parking lot. Okay, as far as the existing driveway of the house, I did, I don't have a picture of that either. It is a dirt driveway, so that structure is gonna be used for accessory storage for the shopping center. I would think there would be people coming back and forth with vehicles or having deliveries done. So it's, I'm recommending that it be be asphalt and sixteen feet at the curb cut, 'cause that's required for one traveling.
Why couldn't they landscape across the front and just access it from the parking lot?
Well, 'cause there's there's going to be fire zones per the fire marshal in the back parking lot, so it's really not appropriate for deliveries in the back, 'cause they'd be in the fire zone.
So when you say storage, it also means that they would trust fully in there to deliver.
Well, that's what I just said, yeah, that that's my assumption. So, I did refer this to the highway departments, and they indicated they would require a a concrete apron for the driveway.
So, the deliveries, is it gonna be food and and frozen?
No, this is not even think, we're thinking about, you know, whatever whatever things Kenny has that.
Tables, chairs, seasonal stuff.
Yeah, whatever, right, so so it's not a big traffic thing, and he'd like to, you know, he always does a classy job about landscaping, so he'd wanna sort of match up the whole. Sound Avenue corridor with whatever plants and match it up, so I have no problem with it with any of Karen's comments about what to do. Whatever G O wants, we'll do it, whatever's required by law, we'll do, I'll anticipate things when they're not required, so.
As far as accessibility and sidewalks, the Nightland Village Shops at Eastwind has a sidewalk that continues to their property line. It doesn't, it does not continue along the front of the smaller parcel. So, I would recommend that that be continued, and G O also indicated he he's requiring that the sidewalk be continued, at least up to the driveway. And as far as accessibility goes, there's no handicap accessible entrance to the building because there's steps to the front and the rear with no accessible pathway. There's no handicap accessible parking close to that building. I'm recommending they move one handicap stall from near the shops to towards the, close to the the storage structure. They're showing a concrete walkway leading from the parking area towards the towards the house, which is now. So I don't see a problem with moving one stall, and then you would delete one stall, the extra stall. And then you would have your handicapped access aisle. They'd have to provide a handicap curb cut and assuming some sort of handicap ramp to get into the building. If they provide, well, they're being required to provide the public sidewalk in front, so they'd need a handicap pathway from there to the house as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that, but I'm just saying, if it's required, you got it.
Okay.
I'd rather have more trees and less concrete, but that that's okay.
Well, I don't think that's required any removal of trees.
For a storage building, we have to go from the public sidewalk to this handicapped entrance, if that's required, we do it. Put the sidewalk in, we do it, it's just a debate about, I don't know, for what in the storage unit.
He said it's required.
From the public, yeah, done, done, no more conversation.
Near that restaurant, isn't there some, right outside that, that that restaurant, isn't there handicap parking facilities right outside the door?
Well, I'm not talking about the the shops, I'm talking about the house to be converted.
Oh, just, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, they they were proposing another handicap stall, well, two more handicap stalls at the shops.
Okay.
Because of the, it was required because of the increase in parking requirements.
Yep, yep.
But now I'm just saying, take one and move it over by the.
Why take one, why not just add one?
Because they won't have enough parking then, they they would they would be getting. If you're gonna to add one, I don't think they have a place to add another, you know what I'm saying?
Adding one, I'm keeping the two that are there.
Right.
And adding the one by the house that's required for handicap, instead of taking one away, switching.
Because then they'll need another aisle. I'm, you think maybe you're right, well, whatever you need to do again.
Whatever we're gonna do, we'll do it.
That'll probably stand to maintain for two twenty.
Right, as long as you you don't go below below the requirement of two nineteen.
Well, we'll do whatever whatever Joe, anybody says, we'll do it.
And I just wanted to mention the proposed handicapped curb ramp at the shops that ends in a landscaped area with no, you have to have a three-foot or a four-foot landing. So if it just gets moved over, that would be fine. And then as far as lighting goes, they're showing lighting for the new parking area. The site plan does go into which lights are going to be relocated and which ones are going to be new. If that information can be repeated on the lighting plan, that would be best. And then I compared the order number with with the specification seat provided for the pole lighting, and it indicated they're proposing metal halide fixtures.
Those are mistakes carried over from the old plan.
Okay.
So all the lighting on the plan will be compliant?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And a- a- any inaccuracies I've said before, we'll redo this, we'll address Karen's comments, I just wanna get through the public room.
And also, I couldn't tell that these lights were full cut off, so that would have to be confirmed. And then as far as the house to be converted to storage, I would assume that some lighting would be needed for that. No lighting is shown, so if that could be provided. Then I just had a question for the planning board, the the addition to the restaurant is going to have this rolling tent roof system with LED lighting. And as you can see, it's going to be, if these. These, I don't know what you'd call them, shutters or whatever are all rolled up, it's going to be pretty open. So I was wondering if the board would wanna have, look at the information on the lighting to be proposed on the roof.
On the inside?
Yeah.
Won't they place between the extrusions? Yeah.
That's what I would think, yeah.
It's it's actually part of the whole canvas collapsing.
So, it it's not gonna present an illumination to the sky, it's just the visual going by is what your question is.
Yeah, that's what.
Right, and we've got this row of arborvitae on both sides of this thing. If you're walking outside, it's.
Right, the the, there are arborvitae, except if you're kind of just a little bit past the intersection of twenty-five A and Sound Avenue, then you have a real clear look at the structure.
We'll provide some more answers or details to it, if you want.
Okay.
It's not like it's outside shining on you.
No, I I I think it's okay.
Yeah, he does a great job on his.
'Cause it's under the roof, boy, let me tell you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I can imagine what he spends.
Um, and then as far as landscaping goes, there was a approximately twenty-foot wide area on the west side of the shops at Wading River Parcel. That was full of trees and vegetation, most of that is going to be removed, and most of the wooded area to the rear of the, well, yeah, the majority of the wooded area to the rear of that home is going to be taken out for this parking area. There was just some discrepancies with the plan, showing a lot of area as sod, which is not actually, well, it's better to take a look at the plan, that helps.
I think some of that was just a mistake, the landscape plan shows one thing, the site plan shows something.
Shows another.
We'll correct it.
We just have to make corrections.
And then, you know, some of it is is obviously landscaped area, but it's labeled as natural area, so just to clarify that. Also, the the landscaped area breakdown lists seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine square foot of natural to remain, which doesn't appear accurate, it looks like it would be less than that.
We'll revisit that information supply team.
Also, I just wanted to ask the board, since there there will be removing a lot of cheese, but there there is a significant amount of cheese that can be retained on the par parcel with the house in the front yard and what's going to be the rear yard after they put in the parking lot. If the board wanted to see them shown on the plan, or if the board was satisfied with just something.
If you could label the plan which thing and what's being cleared, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Save as many as you can.
Okay, and I just gotta do handicap sidewalks now and other stuff, so.
You go to the trees.
No, it's, I don't think it will remove any any significant amount of trees.
I understand, and I'm just trying to match up what what's already there, east and west, so, you know, whatever.
Save save what you can.
Exactly.
And then there's this mulched, this mulched area that's to the east of the existing parking lot, and they're showing some symbols in there that don't match what's there or match what was approved, so.
We'll identify those pieces.
Actually, we'll use whatever you said as far as the note, and just make that note.
Yeah, if if the the board is satisfied, they can just indicate a note saying that what's existing will remain. Then there was just a discrepancy about one species of planting, of the amount that needs to be corrected. And also, some discrepancies about the number of trees that will be relocated, that need to be corrected. Yeah, and the plan indicates about fourteen thousand square feet of parking lot landscaping is required. But indicates that a hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six square foot is provided, which I think is a mistake, that needs to be corrected. And then as far as the landscaping for the parking area, they are, they do have an existing irrigation well, the. The, um, the plantings proposed are not drought tolerant, so I know the planning board has expressed some interest in drought tolerant species. I don't know if the board wants to do that or not in this case.
Well, you gonna, is everything gonna be watered with the existing irrigation well?
That's what it says, yes.
Yeah, it is, no.
I think that's fine.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, I had another recommendation. I'm sorry that I don't have a picture of that, um, traffic barrier. Uh, I just thought it might improve the, improve the appearance if some of the low plantings were put in in front of it, like dwarf inkberry or something to that effect. Does the board have any feelings on that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Which side is the front?
Uh, the one facing the roadway.
Okay, so you can't see it from.
Right, so you can't see it from the roadway. Okay, so the board is in agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so I, I, I guess the A R B will have the final say on the screening of the structure if the board feels that's appropriate. Um, like I said, at least two of the A R B members got back to me saying they felt the arborvitae was sufficient, um.
Unless it changes.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with just about anything Mr. Barrett does, cause it always looks good.
Yeah, and I think that's what the A R B was leaning toward as well.
That's what it means.
The twenty first. Okay, so they'll go forward with the A R B. Um, as far as the fire marshal, like I said, he had his normal comments about, you know, getting permits. Um, but he also wanted a fire zone to be established in the area behind the house to be converted to storage. I included the building department comments, but I don't think there's anything we need to go through with that. As I said, the water district is requiring an R P Z for the house conversion. Um, they're also going to be requiring additional key money for the increase in the restaurant seating capacity because the last time they looked at it, it was much less seating. And they did indicate that as long as the landscaped area will be irrigated with the well, they won't include the irrigated area in their key money fee. So, um, that's about it.
So I see the public hearing is.
Yes, it's on the agenda for.
The fifth, so is that enough time to post everything?
Sure.
And will the revised plans be available to the public before that date?
Yeah, done, sure, absolutely.
Cause they really need to be here for the hearing, okay?
No, done, done. Done. We can support.
I'm playing out.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gosh. Karen?
Yes?
I took one of your copies from here, is there other things?
Oh, thanks.
Okay, next item, item seven, Villas at Roanoke.
Hello?
Hello, gentlemen?
Hi.
Boys.
How are you?
How are you, sir? Hey, Davey, how are you? Hey, guys.
How are you?
How you been? Everybody well?
We'll get you.
Good. Good.
So if it's on Soundshore Road, why do you call it Roanoke? Is that technically Roanoke?
No, it's just the corporation.
It's just an L L C they set up.
For the LPs, on Roanoke.
Yeah.
Which is the name.
All right, so, uh, what we have is a continued discussion of a proposed major subdivision up on Soundshore Road in Jamesport. Um, the planning, the planning board had recently received and reviewed an as-of-right yield map, um, which identified six lots in the potential development. Um, planning board approved that six lot as a right yield map by resolution number nineteen dash forty six dated June sixth, two thousand nineteen. What we have now is an increased density yield map, which proposes to apply T D Rs to increase the development density for the proposed subdivision. This current map identifies a total of fourteen lots in the proposed subdivision, which is predicated upon the obtaining and redeeming eight T D Rs pursuant to Town Code Section three oh one dash two oh eight A. T D Rs can be used to increase lot yield within the R A eighty zoning use district. However, in no case shall the lot be smaller than forty thousand square feet. And Town Code Section three oh one dash two oh eight B states that T D Rs can be used to increase lot yield within the R A forty zoning district. However, in no instance shall the lot be smaller than twenty thousand square feet. So they are applying, proposing to apply the eight T D Rs to this map to go from six to fourteen. Um, when the board reviewed the as-of-right development yield map, which showed the six lots, it was noted at that time that the applicant's design professional did not identify any areas on the map which were reserved for drainage or stormwater recharge. It was noted that there was approximately eighty thousand square feet of land, uh, of excess land contained within that subdivision. In addition, you know, beyond what was required for the minimum dimensional regulations. Um, so the board agreed that that eighty thousand square feet, when it got down to a sketch plan or a cluster plan, could sort of be reoriented and if necessary, could have been used for drainage and recharge. Um, now that the applicant is proposing a yield map which significantly increases the density, um, it has effectively removed any excess area that could be reserved for drainage. Now, this increased T D R yield map does show some drainage structures within the right of way. Um, I believe it consists of fourteen drainage rings that are shown on the right of way. Um, however, there's no details as to the capacity or the size of this system. Prior to the planning board approving an increased density yield map, uh, staff recommends that the applicant perform test hole sampling on the property to determine the suitability of subsurface soils uh, to manage the onsite stormwater. Um, now, based on previous applications that have been made to the town of Riverhead Building Department as well as the Conservation Advisory Council, um, there are portions of this area of Soundshore Road, uh, located directly to the north across the street, um, that contain a thick subsurface layer of clay material which severely impacts the drainage. Um, on other applications, that clay lens has been shown to be anywhere from thirty to forty feet thick, um, which again could significantly restrict their ability to maintain their stormwater within the right of way. We did get a memo from our consulting engineer which, uh, supported the need for demonstrating at this point the ability for the applicant to maintain their stormwater onsite. I did look at the U S D A nineteen seventy five soil survey of Suffolk County. Uh, the property was shown to contain as many as four types of soils, which consisted of riverhead sandy loam, Plymouth gravelly loamy sand, Montauk fine sandy loam, and muck soils. Um, now again, the actual existence of the subsurface soils is not going to be known until the applicant performs some test hole sampling. But that's where we're at now, because before the board can approve it, once the board approves a fourteen lot yield map, whatever the intent is, the applicant, whether it's to sell the development to the county potentially or develop it, once the board says that the fourteen lot yield map is acceptable, we would be holding to that. So it's really at this point, uh, the applicant's gotta demonstrate that they, and I'm not talking a fully engineered plan, um, but they need to be able to demonstrate that they can maintain their stormwater within the right of way if they're not going to show any drainage or recharge areas.
How many test holes are you proposing? Fourteen?
Uh, I mean, that, that's really some, I. I don't know if the consulting engineer, consulting engineer recommended, let's see.
I think, I think he wants to see the calculations that this is gonna work.
Yeah, I think I did, like, read that somewhere.
Yeah, so the calculations, uh, Mr. Guardiello did say, prior to acceptance of the map, we recommend that the applicant's engineer demonstrate that the onsite soil conditions would be suitable for providing subsurface stormwater drainage containment systems as opposed to having to construct a recharge basin, which could impact the total lot yield. This could be achieved by performing two onsite soil borings and providing preliminary drainage calculations for the proposed drainage system on the map. So I mean, we, we're, we're talking two test holes. Um, you know, I mean, I think maybe the engineers could consult as to where the location of those test holes are taken. But it's really before we move forward, they need to demonstrate that they can manage the stormwater, because I know historically that area of Soundshore Road does have some drainage issues.
Do you want test holes or do you want borings?
We want test hole, we want soil samples, we want to see, I mean.
Yeah, you want a boring, which is, or a test hole, which is done.
Uh, I, I would say borings, I mean, if, I said, if there's a, if there's potentially a thirty or forty foot thick layer of clay under that soil, I mean, that's something that we need to know before we would approve a fourteen lot increased deven- increased density map.
Yeah, I, I, I've got a problem with lots seven and eight, I really do. With looking, first of all, the fact that you've got wetlands on it. And I, I would like to see somehow you show where you're going to actually put the house. If it was a, a building, but, cause you've got drainage that goes down there, it's wetlands, I, I don't even know that they may even, that may even have water. Although there's the fact that it's wetlands, that sort of indicates that you've got, you've got some poor soil conditions that are keeping it wet.
Yeah, that, that wa- that was the area, um, you know, our G I S overlay is not a hundred percent accurate, but that area of the map did appear to be the area that contained the mucky soils, so that's probably what's impacting it.
Makes sense.
I, I, I've been up there, uh, you know, I, I can tell you that you can't see any, any, any wet, but I didn't, I mean, I'm not.
Well, I mean, it, it's be- it's behind these two houses, when I di- I did walk this property and there was wetlands there as well as kind of the back here.
Cause that's really, that's a fairly large area, cause it continues.
And it does kinda, it, it does sort of continue over here, this is the North Fork Reserve, so there is wetland.
So does the, does the minimum square footage for that zone?
Yes.
Include or exclude the wetland area? I know they have to have a certain setback.
Right, so it, it did, it, they did, they did take the wetlands out of the yield calculation for that lot and it does still meet the twenty four thousand nine hundred and fifty eight. Um, one of the things that they did when they were calculating the yield is there's a provision in the Town Code which allows you to utilize thirty feet into a more restrictive zone. Um, so that's why they're utilizing, you know, thirty feet into the R A forty to get their yields for the increased density. So, when looking at the totality of the map, the lots within the R A forty zoning district are larger than twenty thousand square feet which is required for the T D R increased development and the lots within the R A eighty exceed forty thousand, which is required in that development. So really at this point, you know, the borings, um, soil samplings, calculations that they can manage the stormwater within the right of way.
So you were looking for building envelopes and those to lot?
Yeah.
Okay. It seems to me that, so.
Combine two lots, make it one, and you guys, I think that's workable for business.
Who calculates, um, the yield map? Do we review what they?
Uh, well, so the applicant's design professional would submit a yield map, uh, you know, the as-of-right, just demonstrating that they.
So you've already done that?
Yeah, the, the as-of-right demonstrates that it's got the right of way, that, you know, the infrastructure area is taken out.
My question is, you know, you have larger lots in the back, you, I hate these lots that the house is like right on the road. Doesn't necessarily fit with the cap, there's no way of shrinking these down and having some kind of natural buffer area in that first lot.
The receiving area.
What's that?
Cause the receiving area split, this was, uh, it was split this way. So this had to stay bigger and these were allowed to stay smaller. Of course, this was the receiving area below this line. It's all in receiving, this was more than this.
This is a yield map.
Yeah.
If we went to preliminary, these, these lot lines would change.
Right.
There is, there is a cluster requirement in the R A eighty zoning district. Um, there is no requirement in the R A forty. But I could, we can consult with council whether or not, you know, I mean, my opinion was that this lot is presently heavily wooded. Uh, it would be a shame if we were to lose all of that. Cluster requirements do seek to preserve up to seventy percent of the land in cluster down, so I mean, whether that consisted of just clustering in the back and then doing something, I mean, this is just a yield map, that's not, that's not what the final subdivision would look like, but yeah.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Right, I understand.
Staff would definitely recommend preserving, you know, preserving road frontage.
Yeah, we, we, we can preserve, like, this whole area right here that they say they don't like. Put all the lots like that, you know. Yes. Of course, the same way.
Yeah, okay, this, you know, you're driving down Soundshore Road to have a house right in front of you.
Yeah, totally agree.
But if this is just a yield map, a yield map, I don't necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, our ultimate goal is to, we were working with Alan Krupski.
Okay.
Is that what you're trying to get at again?
Yeah, we're, we're, that's what we're waiting for. Yeah, I talked to Janet, Janet this morning. She's just waiting.
They don't want to order the appraisal until they know what the yield is.
Right.
You know, and ultimately, like, the Villas at Roanoke, um, I couldn't get a, a, a reasonable appraisal until the board granted me preliminary, so they granted me preliminary, I don't know if you remember, but there was a laundry list of conditions.
But you had to.
And, and we were able to get the preliminary and it, and the county took that as face value, okay, they have preliminary. But to really get to the next phase, we had a ton of work to do. But, but we got the preliminary, which helped us with the appraisal, which made the deal.
I mean, would, would we be able to?
And that's really what our goal is.
Would we be able to do something like that where if we've got a yield, we have to demonstrate at a later time that if we wanted to proceed further to continue with the subdivision portion, you guys can put whatever you want in there as far as the drainage, then we have to cut back.
You can't, you can't do that, how can you, in other words, until we know exactly what, until we have the samples and whatever, how do we know what to?
We agree, we're gonna get samples, that we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, until we can go on it, until we have all the more information, you know, how can we determine that?
I, I, I agree with that assessment, I think that's pretty fair, because like I said, the bottom line is until you can demonstrate that you can manage the stormwater, you know, it may result in the loss of one or two of these lots if the soil conditions, you know, prove unsuitable to manage it. So I mean, I, I think it would be premature to approve a fourteen lot yield map and then do the engineering. I mean, that's something that, you know, if we say we're, you know, it's gonna be twelve lots or it's gonna be fourteen lots, that's what we're gonna be holding to. Um, and then in turn, just one more thing in terms of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, being that the application does currently propose maximizing the potential development of the property, um, the applicant must comply with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Now, if it does go forward with this fourteen lot, uh, yield map and it goes through the subdivision process, um, the eight T D Rs much, must be purchased and then the applicant must either set aside ten percent of the lots within the subdivision as affordable housing or they must reduce the maximum yield by one. But reduce, reduce, yeah, reducing the maximum yield wouldn't obviate them from purchasing all eight T D Rs.
And we understand that. That's my answer.
Yeah.
Drop the lot.
Or combine those two lots, you know.
We'd have to do that, so we have to, we have to go down.
And we need to see if one of the lots is gonna be needed for a recharge.
Yep.
We don't know until we do the test boards.
Yeah, we're, we're prepared to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll do the test boards.
And then your engineer can do the.
And do the drainage calculations.
So on the hour.
Get us back on the, on the agenda once it's complete. Okay. Thanks, guys. This is yesterday with Billy, I took Billy's all the stuff yesterday.
Yeah, before we get any approvals and have calculations.
He broke the scale.
Really?
I had a fifty pound scale and I was pulling it up in the spring stall.
That's a beautiful thing, very neat.
We were, uh, we were redraft. It was great, like, three hours. I was supposed to leave at like two thirty to get home.
Good luck, Ash.
Okay, before we take up the resolutions, are there any comments on the resolutions? Any comments from the public? Okay, resolutions, first one.
I'd like a, uh, motion that remove resolution number seventy four for the U residence, chapter nineteen, so moved.
Second? Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution seventy four. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventy-four, chapter two nineteen for the U Residence, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I move number seventy-five, which is the chapter two nineteen coastal erosion hazard permit for Lucille Holt Residence in Wading River.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventy-five, chapter two nineteen, Holt Residence, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Uh, I just had two questions on those. Were those resolutions gonna be as amended that the applicant's gonna demonstrate that the fill coming in was clean?
Yes, yes, sorry, we should have put that in.
For both of those?
Yes.
So we'll just add a condition on both of those.
Seventy-four and seventy-five will be as amended for the certified clean fill.
And s- and we've also had on, uh, on the U Residence, there was a question regarding the amount of fill.
John was gonna verify what's going in and out on his inspections.
Okay, I'll move resolution, excuse me, resolution number seventy-six. Verizon Wireless at Edwards Avenue to approve a site plan to modify the, and upgrade the existing facility. So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventy-six, Verizon Wireless upgrades at Edwards Avenue, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I move resolution number seventy-seven for Verizon Wireless at Fresh Pond, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventy-seven, Verizon Wireless at Fresh Pond Avenue upgrades, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Before we get to this one, number five, I have a question. I have a question on this. And, and this is your resolution, right, Tefs?
Yep.
They have to still go to ARB?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Don't they usually go ARB first and then we do this?
We're trying to.
Isn't that, isn't that the usual procedure?
That is.
Just in case they, they make some changes that affect this.
That is the usual procedure. This is kind of a mutual application.
I know there's a, there's a, there's a haste here to get this done. I understand that, but.
If they, if they have a question or they do something that they already just kind of come to resolution, they can always not vote on it, and they bring it back to us at the next meeting.
I don't follow what you mean.
If there's, if they can't come to an approval or agreement next week.
With who, with the ARB, I mean?
Yeah. If they don't come to, if they can't come reach an agreement in some way, manner, or form, we can bring them back, the recommendation back to the planning board for the meeting two weeks from now, and then you guys can vote on it.
Why don't we just do that?
It's up to the board.
Now, we, we had, uh, there was a request to get this.
I understand that.
Approved for various reasons, and the reasons were adequate to the board. And, you know, we, we said that we'd bring it on this month.
I, I appreciate that. I just, that's okay, go ahead. I'm just not, I can't vote for it. But that's okay. All right, I'll move resolution number seventy-eight for the Irwin-Garston Retail Center. So moved.
Second.
Okay, I just want to point out that this is a downsizing, and nothing's changed as far as clearing from the previous approval. So we have a motion seconded to approve resolution seventy-eight, Irwin-Garston Retail Center, for an amendment. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed, not for the project, but just for the, the fact that we should have the ARB first.
Okay, resolution is approved, four to one.
I'll move resolution seventy-nine, four oh six Osborne Avenue, to schedule a public hearing for September fifth, two thousand nineteen, on a preliminary site plan application. So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution seventy-nine, four oh six Osborne Avenue for a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Move resolution number eighty for Ruggiero's Public Hearing. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution eighty, schedule a public hearing for Ruggiero's. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Uh, any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board? Any public comment?
I make a motion that we move the minutes from the August first, two thousand nineteen, planning board. Is it so moved?
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of August first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, I just need a motion to go into executive session for legal advice from counsel.
Motion.
Pretty sure we're supposed to state the, uh, deck, we're supposed to state the executive session item. What's that? Yeah.
Uh, it's the, um, advice from counsel on the, uh, challenging of whether or not you need municipal approval for the expansion of a electrical substation.
Okay. Okay, that, that, that's fine.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.